Good evening and welcome to the September 27, 2016 School Committee Meeting. We're happy to have you join us. This meeting is being recorded by East Hampton Media. East Hampton Media Channels 191, 192, and 193 is looking for volunteers. If anyone is interested in helping to tape city government meetings, please contact Kathy Lynch at (413) 203-1360. And we'd like to thank Tim Riley for taping tonight's meeting for us. Superintendent Follins, did you have some announcements for us?
Yes, I do. There's a Hampshire County College Fair at Smith Academy High School from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock tonight, September 27. There's a half day of school on Monday, October 3rd due to Teacher Professional Development Day. There is no school on Monday, October 10th due to Columbus Day. There's a half day of school on Thursday, October 20th, and Friday, October 21st due to parent-teacher conferences. There is no school on Tuesday, November 8th due to Election Day and Teacher Professional Development. There is no school on Friday, November 11th due to Veterans' Day. There is no school Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, November 23rd, 24th, and 25th due to Thanksgiving break.
Thank you very much. Do we have some correspondence?
Yes, we have several items of correspondence tonight. First, we received an email from Sabrina Rodriguez with a request for transportation to Peppin School. And we also have here recorded our response from our Chairperson, Deb Alusnia, reiterating the busing policy in response to her request. Additionally, we have from Christine Silvero, the Guidance Counselor and Team Leader at East Hampton High, a copy of the flyer that was shared with parents during open house recently. And this flyer details all of the events that are upcoming regarding college readiness and preparedness. There's a lot of exciting things that are happening, field trips to local schools, and workshops on early applications and sorts of exciting college readiness steps. And finally, we got a thank you card from a number of East Hampton teachers and staff thanking the East Hampton School Committee for passing the resolution supporting the "No on Question 2" campaign. And I know that, I think I can speak for everyone, that we're really excited as a school committee to join the number of school committees and city councils across the state of Massachusetts who have really been proud and excited and really moved to come out against the charter school question and ask for voters to vote "No" on "Two."
And we've had a number of committee members holding signs, making phone calls, and going toward a door. So we thank everyone for those efforts. Okay, moving on, do we have any gifts to report?
No gifts this week.
Okay. And that brings us to the public speak portion of our meeting. It doesn't look as though anyone is here to speak to us at this time, but we do always invite any member of the public to come and speak to us if they'd like to on any topic at this time in our meeting. So we'll move on to our subcommittee reports. Finance Subcommittee.
The Finance Subcommittee will be meeting, we're going to be scheduling another mini-meeting just before our next school committee meeting. We'll work that out after tonight's meeting. We'll figure out the best date. And do you want me to give the update for the collaborative?
Sure.
Out of order, since I'm here.
Go ahead.
Tomorrow is our monthly meeting, so at the next school committee meeting, I should have an update. I know that the charter cap is going to be a big issue for tomorrow night.
All right, the Policy Review Subcommittee.
Okay, so we met on, excuse me, I've got a bit of a cold, so I hope you guys can hear me. In our last Policy Subcommittee meeting, which was last Tuesday, I believe, we discussed the current transportation policy, which I know has been generating a lot of questions around the district recently. And I just wanted to make sure that we're clear about what we're able to do and what we're required to do. We're required to bus some students to school, specifically elementary school students that live two miles or further away from their school. And in addition to that, we can also offer transportation to some students who live closer to the school. But the way that the law is written now, we have to make sure we extend equal opportunity to every single person in the district, which means that you might live in a neighborhood where it appears that a bus isn't full, and yet you can't get transportation for your child. And it's because there's another neighborhood where a bus is full. We can't grant people in one neighborhood transportation if the bus is full in another neighborhood because it's considered discrimination. And we've labored with this question for a while, since, definitely since before I came on, and, you know, way before that as well. Several years ago, there were some budget cuts that were made that resulted in losing a bus, and I think that's when people started to notice this as a real issue. And at that time, the school committee was choosing between getting teachers in classrooms and paying for a bus. And they chose to go with the teachers in the classrooms instead of the bus. But it was a tough decision, and I definitely appreciate that. So what we decided at the last Policy Subcommittee meeting, we've been doing some research, I've been looking into what some other districts are doing. We talked about potentially doing like a lottery where you could enter your name, and then we could kind of draw random people to get the extra seats on the bus. And we couldn't figure out a way to do that that fits within the current equal opportunity law. We worked really hard on that, and it just doesn't appear to be possible. But what some other districts have done that has been successful is setting up what's called a walking bus, which is where like community members, volunteers, would, they go by each child's house, and the group walks to school together in the morning. So you're not sending your kids out by themselves to walk a long distance to school. There's other families and other students involved. So we talked about the potential of working on setting a walking bus up. And we also talked about figuring out a way to help parents set up car pools, and especially parents who are new to the district, who maybe don't know as many people in the area. So those were some of the alternatives we talked about. So we're going to be discussing this again in a couple of weeks and trying to come up with some other options for people who were just not able to provide busing to. But I want to let everybody know that we're definitely hearing your concerns, and we really, really want to make this, make it easier for everybody. So we're working on it. And thanks for being patient with us. And you can always feel free to contact us if you have any questions or anything.
Sarah, did you want to also mention earlier notification that we had talked about?
Oh, yeah, we also talked, and I think that, I think everybody will agree, that if parents knew a little bit earlier on whether or not they'd have a bus, it'd be easier for them to make different arrangements for their students. So we're going to try to get the announcements out about the bus routes sooner than we do now, so that parents have, you know, over the summer, they can work on setting up alternative arrangements if they have to.
When do they get them now?
When do they get them now?
In the fall.
Yeah.
And just before school starts.
So, yeah, so we, you know, that's definitely something that we want to work on as well. And I think that would make it a lot easier for a lot of people.
So any idea when that idea of the walking bus might start?
Well, that's what we're going to, we're going to kind of discuss in our next meeting, a little bit more about like who would be responsible for that. Like I have to look more into how other districts have done it. And, you know, we're hoping to talk with some other people about it as well, so.
Maybe team up with the PTO on that one?
Yeah, yeah, you know, if there's any organization, community organization who wants to work with us on that, you know, that would be great.
You know, Nancy, too, what you were mentioning, a lot of people probably don't know, you were talking before about the resolution we did for, you know, Number Two regarding charter schools. Isn't that regarding busing, one of the issues that we also face?
Well, this year, we are, you're required to provide transportation to students who attend charter schools in your community. And so this year, we're also providing transportation to some of the charter school students. The Director of the Charter School at Hilltown has been, you know, working with me. She's been wonderfully cooperative, working with me to see how we could do this in a way that would not increase the cost to our district of purchasing another bus or more busing, more busing time. But it is, it has complicated our bus routes and our schedules and so forth. And she and I have talked about how we need to know these things earlier next year as well, so.
Yeah. And I also wanted to mention that I know that families do have to, have to pay for, if they don't have free or reduced lunch, the student has to pay to ride the bus. And that, the amount that they pay, nowhere comes close to covering the cost of running the bus. And so I think there might also be some misunderstanding out there, like, well, we're paying for this, like I bought a seat, you know, or I want to buy a seat, like why can't I have it? And it's, you know, that, you know, that money definitely helps a little bit, but it doesn't even come close to covering what a whole bus costs for the year. It's really amazing to me, looking at the rates, like how much it actually costs to get a school bus.
Well, and the estimate was $70,000 for each bus that we would add to our fleet of buses that transport our children. So that's, that's a couple of teachers, for sure.
But to return to the Mayor's point, I think we hear this pro-charter rhetoric about how when the money follows the student, then the district is no longer, is alleviated from the cost of educating that student. But this is another way that that's just patently false, that in fact, we're still bearing the responsibility of transporting charter students to their charter school.
Completely false. And the money does, a lot more money follows a student than is received. So, and just a little update, you know, we've been talking about, like at our campaigning and our canvassing, this year, it's about 900, it's a little over 900,000 that we lose from our district for charter, which is pretty high.
And that's for a number of charter schools, not just the ones in our community.
Exactly. Thank you, Nancy. Not singling any out. But I don't, I think a lot of people probably don't realize that we are required to, you know, provide busing. And thankfully, the Director has been, you know, working with you in the past on that, Nancy.
Collaborative.
But it makes it difficult when it's right here in the same community.
Do we have to provide busing to all charter school students who are residents in East Hampton regardless of their distance from the school?
No, we provide it with the same policy requirements that we do for our students.
Okay.
But the location of the school?
Yes, is different.
Changes the actual impact.
Yes.
So by law, it looks like it's equal, but by virtue of the choice of a Hilltown school to be in an industrial park at the absolute perimeter of the town, means that a much larger percentage of students will be eligible for bus service than would be for our own schools, which are more centrally located.
Which adds to the situation that your subcommittees are working on.
Right. So the choice of the location, not only is ironic, if not patently phony, to claim to be a Hilltown school located in an industrial park in a city, but it adds to the expense the town faces, that our city faces in their operations.
I think the other thing that's a challenge is that the state requirement is that we accommodate the charter school schedule. So the charter schools does not have to operate on the same schedule we operate on. And again, the Director of Hilltown Charter has been, has worked very collaboratively with me to try to make that work, so that, you know, we aren't having to contract with another bus, or contract for another bus at $70,000.
But with all due respect, and I appreciate that the Mayor and you as Superintendent have done a wonderful job, it's in the self-interest of the school to be as cooperative as they possibly can be. So forgive me if I don't join in the applause of how cooperative they're being, you know, that is sort of suggesting that, well, you bake the cake and we'll help pay for the icing, right? It's just not, it's not in any way equitable, and it's not relevant to the broader issue. So I appreciate and I understand, and it's great that the two of you and others have taken a constructive leadership role, but it's, it's also by necessity. You have to do that, and I appreciate that you have to do it. You know, I think for many citizens in the community, we're not bound by that same reality in that we can talk about the impact that this school, however well-intended, the presence of this school has a deleterious effect on our community schools. And serves a disproportionately above-average-income population relative to the, to the city, serves a disproportionately below-special-needs student population, and participates in this fictional argument that's made by advocates for expanding charter schools, that they serve everybody on the exact same basis as the traditional public schools do, and do it more effectively and at lower cost. None of that's true, no matter how many times you say it. And in this current political environment, there's, there's ample evidence that some people believe that if you just keep saying something, that's a lie. It becomes true, because we've repeated it a number of times, but I think it's important to call that out. Those things are not true. These schools are not serving the same demographic that the community schools are. And that is overwhelmingly important when you go to the heart of the supposed mission of the charter schools. And anyone's welcome to contradict us. They never have, because they know the evidence is true. So they hope that people aren't listening, aren't paying attention, or will go along with it anyway. But that's, that's the unfortunate reality.
I think it's been difficult providing the accurate facts to the public. And the, you know, committees that have been out there canvassing and doing this, have been doing an extraordinary amount of, you know, public outreach and phone banks and everything. But it's been difficult, especially with the media that we're facing on the commercials. It's been very difficult to get the accurate, to have people, once you are able to engage them, and they receive the accurate information, they totally understand, you know, the difference on that question.
Well, I would suggest that, that someone who cared about public education in the community would be genuinely torn about spending $100,000 of their resources on advertising. But advocates for the charter schools have those kinds of pockets to reach into and can, and can get donations like that and spend it. I think someone who cares about the public schools would help us with the busing, or help us with staffing, or some other issue, because they believe that's where their money would be better spent. But that net, that's what the Mayor is speaking to, which is this deficit that we face in the, in the media world. I know that not a lot of people watch these meetings, and I know that the effort of the canvassing has been tremendous, but I think that it would be, you know, we talk a lot about what we can do as citizens to serve our community, and one of the simple things that we can do is to just talk with our friends, neighbors, colleagues, and really ask them about, have you given this some thought? Because the rhetoric is appealing. The rhetoric is almost overwhelmingly compelling about, wouldn't you want people to have choice? Wouldn't you like everybody to have the same opportunity? And, and, you know, as with most things, the rhetoric is, is just that. When you stop the rhetoric and look deeper at the evidence of what the policy actually means, and what this vote could actually portend for public schools in East Hampton and across the Commonwealth, it's extraordinarily important that we all take every effort that we can to persuade people to think about it. People can vote whatever way they want to, but, but vote by thinking, because if you stop the level of rhetoric, you're likely to have stopped short of serving your community as best you could.
The other thing we talked about at the Policy Subcommittee was the new alcohol, tobacco, and drug policy, which we have to do a first reading of tonight. Do I actually have to read the whole thing?
No.
Okay.
You can just, there can just be a motion.
All right.
The assumption is, of course, all committee members have read it.
Yeah, so it's in the packet. It's almost exactly like what was there, what we had previously, and we're basically being told we have to accept it, and we've already pretty much started implementing it, so.
It's about training, the training on substance abuse, to prevent substance abuse.
So, yeah, so I guess there's a, I want to make a motion to, to what?
Accept the first reading.
Accept the first reading of the Teaching About Alcohol, Tobacco, and Drugs Policy that's proposed for, for the district.
There's a motion that's been seconded to accept the first reading of the Teaching About Alcohol, Tobacco, and Drugs Policy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Do we have a date? Are we meeting before the next school committee meeting?
I was going to, I was going to talk to you about that afterwards.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's it for the Policy Subcommittee?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move on. We've already heard from Cynthia on the collaborative update. We'll move on to Michaela for our Student Activities Update.
Hi, so clubs have been starting off within the next few weeks and past weeks, and I've got reports that we have some clubs that have reached 30 new members. And they have been saying that they're mostly freshmen, which is very good that the freshmen want to get involved within the school. The classes are going to be starting to fundraise, and I've raised money for future events for the classes. And we plan today that we're going to try to do a little march to the homecoming game this year. And each class will make a different float that they want in the plan, because we unfortunately can't do a dance this year around homecoming, so we're going to do the little parade instead. And we're hoping to possibly do a future dance, so all the classes can get involved and raise the spirit up more.
Do you have a date for that?
Homecoming? I'm not sure.
Homecoming date?
Yeah, I can't remember.
We don't have it.
I think it's in October.
That's all right, it'll be on your update.
Yes, it'll be on my next update.
And on the website, which is great.
I'm sure it's on our calendar.
Yep.
Very good. Do you have anything else? Does that cover it?
Yeah, I think that covers it.
That covers it? Okay, great. Thank you very much, Michaela. Okay, we'll move on to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. So this evening, I have the remainder of my administrators here to give their school improvement plans, which are really their goals, that are aligned with my goals and the strategic plan. So we'll start with Kevin Burke, Principal of East Hampton High School.
Before Kevin starts, did you, Nancy, did you want to make a notion of the Ride the Dragon? That was amazing.
Yes.
Or is that in your report later on?
I could do that right now.
Oh, certainly. Only because the stuff is here.
I'm going to stay up here, Kevin.
No, no.
It'll only take a minute.
Your short ride.
Short ride. Yes, we had a wonderful event last Saturday. Actually, should have waited until Principal Rubella was up here, but she's going to be coming up soon.
Okay, never mind.
Dragon Boat Tug of War, so the Paradise City Dragon Boat Team was here, and a number of our teachers participated in a tug of war. They provided rides in the dragon boat for families. And there were booths with activities for kids. We had a huge crowd at the boardwalk, and it was just wonderful. The staff were all dressed up. I think one of the teams, maybe that was at Center Peppin, where the dragon, what was it, dragon ladies?
Fire ladies.
Yeah, we had the girls on fire.
Girls on fire.
And then we had the ladies with the dragon tattoos.
Ladies with the dragon tattoos, yes. So it was great, great fun. And I know that we were talking today about plans for doing it next week, or next, sorry. Poor Allison, no. Next year, next year as well, so.
It was an overwhelming crowd, and it was just so much fun. Great day, too. But everyone was having such a good time. I can't even imagine how many people were there, you know, like just estimating the people real quick. And, but it opened up a lot of different, obviously, everyone keeps things, about different things that we can do at the pond, and we, just so everyone knows, we have our repeated four different things like this, that, you know, we could provide to the community. But I know it's supposed to be really 12 to 3. Now, there was a huge line of not just children, parents and children waiting, still waiting in line to get a ride on that. So that was an amazing amount of exercise. So I have to hand it to you, because that, I don't know when it finally, when you finally got to the end of the line, but it didn't matter. And it was really, like only eight could fit on a boat because of the staff on there, which was great for safety purposes. But I can't thank you enough. I thought, I thought it was just really exciting, and it fit in with so many other activities that were going on, but.
And the farmer's market was going on that day, too.
It was really well done.
The messaging on that was really good, because I work in Hampton County, and I had families in Holyoke and Chickaffee telling me that they were planning on going that weekend. I'd say, like, oh, you know, I live in East Hampton, oh, they're doing that dragon thing, like we're going to go check it out.
Yeah.
So, like, word definitely spread, like, well outside of East Hampton, which is super cool.
That's not easy to get the word out either. I know we had flyers and everything, but it doesn't matter, it's still not easy. And you attracted the media, which, that is not easy, for a positive thing. So it was, it was great, so thank you. Sorry to interrupt, but.
And I just want to mention that Allison is a member of the Paradise City Dragon Boat Team, so, you know, she was, she was very instrumental in bringing this to us, and we were very excited about it. So thank you so much, Allison.
It was great to be right here in East Hampton, right at the pond.
Yeah, yeah.
And the turnout, I agree with you, was just phenomenal. So nice to see all the people.
It was overwhelming. It was great.
And the Whitebrook Team won, right?
Whitebrook won, yeah.
Just had to get that in there.
Yes, Whitebrook won.
Oh, and Mount Tom's made a special ice cream for the occasion, and apparently they sold out because it was so popular.
Yeah, it was one of the students who picked, all the students in the elementary schools, they voted on, or they created their own ice cream flavor with dragon in it.
Yes.
So it was one of the, was it, she a fourth grade?
So the first place was Sadie Flink, who was a fourth grader at Center School. She came up with Fluff the Magic Dragon.
Cute.
Which was delicious.
That was clever. Very new way to do it, too.
It was pumpkin ice cream with little waffle cones in it. It was good. And then the other one was fire.
Second place was Justin Abrahamson, who's a kindergartner at Peppin School. And then third grade was Emmett Dubey, who's from Maple School.
It was great, great event. So thank you, everybody.
Just bringing attention that, you know, the, the amount of work that you put in outside of work, and extra hours and extracurriculars, it doesn't go unnoticed. And, but there's always something going on. You know, if it's not a walk, a run, ride, riding a dragon, but thank you.
And they were all in the tug of war. All of my, my three administrators sitting here were in the tug of war, so.
On a Saturday.
On a Saturday, it was great.
On a gorgeous afternoon.
It was great.
Thank you. I got pictures. Sorry, Kevin.
Hard act to follow, huh, Kevin? All right, so Kevin's going to talk about his goals.
My first is my professional practice goal. This school year, I'm going to work with the Superintendent and other district administrators to develop a deeper understanding of inclusive practices from DESI Educator Effectiveness Guidebook, in order to be able to implement these practices in our school. Some of my key actions are to participate in leadership team meetings to discuss how we're going to use these tools from the guidebook and the self-assessment tool that is there. Also, use classroom observations with the Superintendent to collect data on the practices that are in place in our classroom. And that's my professional practice goal. My student learning goal and first school improvement goal is to improve student achievement in mathematics, increasing the number of students in proficient advanced level of the State Assessment, and narrowing the gap in performance between special education and regular education students. The overall goal is to move students into higher levels on the State Assessment. Some of my key actions are, set the expectations across all the content areas that mathematics is integrated into all lessons. Another focus, another key action is to work with the Mathematics Department and my Assistant Principal to ensure that formative assessments are being used daily in planning future lessons. The last key action I have for that goal is to work with the Superintendent and my Assistant Principal to develop systems of collecting data and assessing progress over time. My third goal, which is my second school improvement goal, is college and career readiness goal, and it's to identify students at risk of dropping out or not graduating on time, and implementing interventions to help them gain tools needed to graduate from EHS and be prepared for either college or career. My key actions here are to create a list of students who are identified at risk, provide training to staff on available interventions, with a focus on supporting student social and emotional needs, and ensure that interventions that teachers have been trained on are being utilized at EHS. And my fourth goal, which is my third school improvement goal, is to work with all content area teachers to increase the complexity of assessments and ensure alignment with the standards to ensure college and career readiness and growth for all students. My first key action here is to create a professional development plan with a focus on researching how to increase the complexity of assessment and ensuring alignments with all standards. And this professional development plan is going to be implemented throughout the year with our PD Coordinator at the high school and with our teachers. We're going to utilize professional development days, department meetings, we're going to use PSAT, SAT, AP, and part questions, and other research-based interventions to guide the development of an increase in the complexity of the assessment and ensure alignment with the standards. And our goal is, by the end of this year, that each teacher has unit assessments in place that are complex and aligned with the standard for at least one course.
And Kevin, I'm going to ask you to elaborate a little bit on that last goal. Kevin and I had a really good conversation about why, well, I asked him why he had chosen this goal. And, and I think it really fits so very nicely with the work that you've been doing at the high school, but I'd like you to talk a little bit more about it, because the goal in the past has been to increase complex tasks in instruction in the high schools. So can you just talk a little bit about that? I know you worked with Kelly Brown on developing this.
So working with, yes, and working with Kelly Brown and the data team. Yes, and working with Kelly Brown and the data team, over the past three years, we've been working on complex tasks. And we've defined complex tasks as a school. We've focused in on four main areas on complex tasks. And as we've moved on, we've realized that, A, we need to increase our assessments. We've done, we did some reading over the summer on assessments and realizing that, you know, right now, a lot of our standards look towards MCAS, which is, gets graduation requirement, but what we really want is college and career readiness, which brings us more up to PSAT and SAT level and AP level questions. So what we're trying to work with teachers on is actually creating questions that are more complex that kinda connect to the complexity of the questions that they're asked to be done in the classroom. So we're connecting, now that we've been working on complex tasks, we're connecting that to the assessments that we're doing in the classroom to try to make those assessments more complex and make sure that they're standard focused also.
Thank you, Kevin. Any questions?
So I was just gonna ask you to clarify a little bit more, that phraseology that you use about complex. Like, can you just define that a little bit more? What is meant by complex assessments or complex questions?
So there, there's a lot of different ways you can look at it. Part of it is the methods students use to go and solve a problem. So a complex task would, in one aspect, require a student to look at a problem and say, okay, what type of method am I gonna use? And that could mean accessing prior knowledge to figure out, okay, I've learned this in the past. How am I gonna utilize what I've learned in the past to actually solve the problem that is currently in front of me? And a complex task should have at least more than one method that can be used to maybe go to an approach and solve that problem. There's multiple different levels that you can look at. There should be, there should be higher order thinking that's required in the task. So you can do it in many different ways. I mean, even in some of the readings I've read, you can have a complex question on, that could be multiple choice because of what it's actually inferring out of a text. So as, as you read into the questions and how questions are created, there's, there's almost a science to how to create a question that students have to actually think harder to actually solve. And that's what we're trying to work with, with our teachers to ensure that the assessments kinda meets what we're asking them to do in the classroom.
Thank you.
If that helped clarify it.
Peter?
So that tells us, and I remember asking in the past, we wanted to see the open response questions for MCAS. I think it'd be great if we could see some examples. You don't physically have to be here, but if perhaps in one of the upcoming school committee packets, there could be a sample of exactly what you've just described, but where we're actually looking at, this is what the students are doing in a science classroom or a history classroom or a mathematics classroom. That would be great if, if there were teachers who were willing to share that.
We definitely will work on that and get that to the school committee.
Thank you.
And it really might be, not, not might be, it would be very interesting, I think, if a few of our teachers could come and explain what they're doing. Because I think they're doing some really unique and innovative things. So if we can arrange that, then we'll get, you know, two or three of them to come and really demonstrate.
When that gets to Kelly, not my idea.
We won't tell.
I screened that out. Yeah, I agree. But that's why I think even seeing examples of what they ask the students to do first would be great. I know many of these folks are up early, particularly at the high school, because you guys open early and that our meetings are late. So I agree with you, but I also, for myself, would be content, at least the first round, to just see some examples from some of the different faculty across the curriculum that illustrate exactly what you've just described. Because I think seeing it and being able to project it and being able to share it, because once we put it here, then it's up on the, on the website and, and people across the community can understand the rigor and the structure and the intentional design of, of the kinds of assignments and assessments that you're describing. And that would be terrific.
Certainly.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
And now I believe that Judy Avril, my principal from Maple School, and Allison Rabello, principal of Center and Peppin Schools, are coming up together because we really try to make the approach to curriculum and instruction consistent across our elementary schools. And Allison and Judy have worked very closely together to, to do that. Last year, they chose similar goals, same goals and, and actions, and theirs are pretty much the same this year as well. So I'm gonna let you both, and this is Allison Rabello, the one who is, Allison raised, so everybody knows you're the one who was instrumental in bringing the dragon boats to us. And then Judy was a great participant. I watched you rowing hard there.
The Maple Magic Team.
We tried. We really, it was fun. It really was a great event.
So if you two would like to talk about your goals.
So as, again, as Superintendent Paulinsby said, Judy and I have been working really closely to make Center Peppin and Maple the same all around as far as elementary goes. Because we want our students to have the same experience. It doesn't matter which school building that they're at. So our professional practice goal is around inclusive practice because in East Hampton, we do include everybody in our schools. And so we're gonna be working with the leadership team and school staff at all of our buildings to develop a deeper understanding of the inclusive practices. We were fortunate at Leadership Team to have somebody from the state come in and talk to us about the Educator Effectiveness Guidebook and talking about how to implement some of those strategies. And so we're gonna be working with the superintendent and leadership team and then also bringing that to our staff as well with different strategies that we might not have thought of before. We'll take a look at collecting some data on what inclusive practices we are currently using. You know, how can we expand, you know, where is it gonna go from now until we've done that some more? And then, you know, use different tools that are presented by the state from the guidebook with our staff. And we've already started to do that through grade level. We started off with our kindergarteners and we'll work our way, kindergarten teachers, I should say, and work our way up. Our student learning goal, which is also our school improvement goal one, is around the achievement gap. And this has to do with both English Language Arts and mathematics. And we're gonna look at classroom models and practice, or develop classroom models and practices to support all learners in order to improve student achievement as measured by state and district assessments. So one of the things that we have at the elementary level is all common assessments. So again, whether a student is at Maple School or they're at Center of Peppin, they're taking the same math assessment or the same English Language Arts or the benchmark assessments. And then our key actions, we started last year really looking at mathematics and the way that our math instruction was happening. And we started to focus on these four different classroom models, which are best practice. And so we're going to continue to develop that this year and look at how can we support teachers in this different implementation where it's not just the teacher up front and, you know, in front of the classroom presenting, but looking at different models for math instruction. During grade level meetings and professional development, we're gonna be working with teachers to develop a list of key best practices that we should be seeing when we go into the classrooms, what is it that we're expecting to be seeing that are good best practices? From the fall to spring, we're gonna be tracking the increase of ongoing formative assessments and how teachers are using the formative assessments to then inform their instruction and also to alter small groups and how they're differentiating in their classroom. And then we'll be looking at analyzing and assessing the data to be looking for progress throughout the year.
And Allison, could you describe those models, those four models for us? I think that's, that's interesting to really get a picture of, of what you're looking for in classrooms and what you're supporting your teachers to do in their classrooms.
So there's, so there's different ways, obviously, to present to a class. One of the more traditional models is teacher up front, you know, presenting the lesson and then students are practicing afterwards. And so that's one model and it's great to use, you know, in different formats, but that's not just the one and only way. There's another model where students are doing some exploration with the mathematics and then they're coming together to then talk about it and then the teacher may do some instruction. There's other models where the teacher might do a general, you know, basic, you know, 15-minute discussion about the mathematics. And then students are working in small groups that are targeted with where they are, more of like a workshop model where students are going through, you know, working with the teacher and working on different areas.
Thank you. Thought that would be helpful to get a picture of that.
Okay, and our next school improvement goal is to continue working on our balanced literacy block. We brought Making Meaning and Being a Writer to our school with Kim Gilbert's help, our literacy coordinator. And last year was our first year of full implementation and this year is our second. So last year, we really focused on making meaning and this year, our major focus is gonna be on being a writer while still supporting teachers in acquiring the skills to implement making meaning with fidelity. And so we will be working on those. Allison and I meet with the literacy coordinator regularly and now we have the fortunate opportunity to be also working with Julianne Levin, who is our new director of curriculum. So she's joined our team, which has been really wonderful. So we have a very strong instructional leadership team that meets monthly to discuss implementation and supporting teachers and students. We will be setting expectations to look for components of this literacy block to make sure that all classrooms, not that many years ago, different classroom teachers were teaching reading in a different manner, depending on their own experience and skill level. Now, there's a very consistent literacy block across the district. And that is true, again, at Maple Center and Peppin. So that's been really exciting and we have seen some real nice data coming out of that, nice, nice achievement out of our students. So that's wonderful. We're gonna continue to monitor and support teachers' progress towards the full implementation through professional development and classroom observations and feedback. So we're not, you know, one of the things that we're really committed to is, is not just bringing in another initiative, but really seeing this initiative through so that we are coming back to it over and over again through professional development, grade level time. And again, through those best practices. So when we talk about facilitation techniques, teachers know when we go in to do an observation, we're looking to see, are they the one doing the talking or are the students talking? Are the students listening to each other? Are they communicating directly amongst themselves without the teacher always having to repeat or rephrase? And these little changes have made a huge impact in student learning. And we're also looking to see it across curriculum. So these wonderful techniques, their learning and making meaning, we're seeing now happening in science and in social studies and that's what we really are encouraging.
I was gonna say, even, even in the specials. So we've worked, for example, I can go into our PE classes and that teacher has worked with the regular ed classroom teachers to look at the vocabulary and teach it through activities in the gym. So we're really trying to integrate it throughout.
Right. And I just want to mention, too, that last, this, in the last year's budget, budget for this year, we were able to put in this position of literacy coordinator. So Kim Gilbert, who is tremendously skillful as a coach and as a teacher of literacy, early literacy, was a half-time reading recovery teacher and half-time coordinator-coach. So she was working with teachers. She's so good at it and, and we needed support in getting these programs put into place. And so with the budget that the mayor helped us have this past year, we were able to give her, make her a position of full-time literacy coach coordinator. And it's just been such a tremendous help for implementing these wonderful, wonderful programs in our schools, so.
It's had a direct impact. It's wonderful.
I know my principals are very happy.
We are very happy. We love working as a team and we love having Kim at the table because she's just so, so skilled. So that's, that's our balanced literacy block. And then our last one is communication, which we continue. I feel like we've come a long way, but we continue to really hone and strengthen engaging families and communities, active participants in the school culture. That means a lot to both of us and it's something that we very intentionally work on, on a daily basis. So we're working on utilizing the Power School email function. I know as a parent, I get nightly robo-calls from my son's school and after a while, you stop answering. So I don't want that to happen. So we're, we're saving the, the robo-calls for really important things. And we're doing the email blitzes so that families are getting more frequent communication, but in a, in a less intrusive manner. Just in a way that they can open the emails at their leisure. And we also, just a side note, we have many teachers taking on the Remind 101, which is an app to just help communicate with families, just to give them that quick little text of, don't forget, you know. And one of the things that's really nice is the teacher can take a picture of an anchor chart they did during the school day that really helps them with the math lesson. And so they'll take a little picture, send it home and say, you know, if they're having trouble with math tonight, this, this'll help. So we've had some nice feedback about that. Not in the goals, but it's, it's an above and beyond and it's going really well. We're using the district and school Facebook pages to share information. And I know the dragon boat was all over Facebook. And I do think that that was part of what got the word out, that and Mass Live, which was helpful. But we're really seeing that a very positive thing. We're keeping our websites up to date. We're really working hard on our websites, making them meaningful, making them link back and forth so that, you know, families are, are going back and forth and using them. And we're just trying to, you know, still doing the backpack flyers. It's important to, to try to hit everyone's mode of communication. So we're still putting the flyers in the backpacks to make sure families are informed. And we're really trying to be as timely as possible. And we're working really closely with the PTO to make sure that parents have as much notice about events, both during the day and at night, so that they can plan for them and arrange childcare if they need to or, or, you know, time out of their, not childcare. Time out of work is the biggest issue. Childcare, if they can come. And then just really working with, with the community involvement, which is exactly what, you know, our Saturday project was. And we're hoping to do more.
So I, I think that, you know, the community involvement part, a lot of people wouldn't maybe put the importance on. I think it's extremely important. And I think that outreach and making everybody feel part of it and the fact that you work together so that all our, all our elementary schools are together is, is a huge credit to you and also a wonderful asset to the parents and the community. So everybody feels like they're part of everything, but they all feel like they're, it's, you know, shared equally amongst. And by working together on a plan, you know, they have a format that they can follow. But I can't say enough about how much outreach and communication that, you know, our, our school departments, the principals, administrators have done, whether it's open houses, whether, and now with all these outside activities. But that is extremely important to the parents. And I think that gets the involvement that you want. And, and I agree with you, don't overdo robo-calls. And especially this time of year, it's like an election call.
You have to, you have to save those for the kids.
But working together is a huge plus for us.
It is, it is. And not all families feel comfortable. You know, we take for granted how comfortable we are in schools, but many families aren't as comfortable walking in to meet the principal or reaching out to us.
They don't feel part of it.
Right.
But when we're, you know, when we're in our shorts and t-shirt and we're down at the boardwalk, they're more apt to talk to you about different things.
I totally agree.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll continue working on that because it is a key. It is very important to us.
It also advertises our schools and what a great, you know, group of educators and administrators we have. So I think you're clout for that.
Anybody else have any?
I just wanted to mention, I know how much work has gone into the implementation of the Making Meaning and Being a Writer programs. And I noticed how that in this goal, those programs are also designed to promote that higher order thinking that Principal Burke was talking about. And I think it's great to see that consistency from the high school to the elementary level. And I also wanted to mention that as someone who has taught for a number of years for the UMass Amherst Writing Program, I'm struck when I go into the elementary school buildings and I see the materials and the processes that you're using through these programs. And they really are completely consistent with what students are doing in college in their writing and composition classes, but just translated into these really kid-friendly ways. And so I think that they're excellent programs and I'm so excited that our kids are getting to benefit from them.
It's ama, it just, as Judy mentioned, I mean, going into our kindergarten classrooms, even first grade classrooms and seeing the conversations that they're having with each other and the writing that they're doing in kindergarten, it just amazes me.
But it comes from the excitement.
Right. And Kim Gilbert was the person who brought that to my attention, brought these two programs to my attention. And as my background is reading and as a reading specialist at one point in my career, you know, I sat down and ran her through a whole gamut of questions and looked at the programs very carefully and, and was really so very excited about what they offered. And then when you, as you say, Marissa, when you see them in operation in the classrooms, it's even more exciting. So, you know, I would invite any of you who have time to come and see this in action in one of our elementary schools, or also our middle school, to please, you know, give the principals a call and make a point to see them.
Well, I know I'm thrilled about the communication, the literacy, and also what Kevin was mentioning earlier, which is, which caught my attention. You know, instituting mathematics in everything you do. It rids, you know, that whole thing, fear factor, I'm not good at math, not true. Math is a part of your everyday life. You can love it. So.
And that's another thing we do across curriculum is the mathematical practices. We're really expecting teachers to be implementing them. And again, music, art, gym, art, they're implementing these things. So students, you go into a first grade classroom and we're talking about precision. We're talking. talking about perseverance, and it's really wonderful, because they're part of the conversation. This is no, you know, and that's what I love to see. And it's, we're just increasing this vocabulary among our children.
And it becomes part of their everyday life, and that's why they excel. So I think it's great. Thank you.
And actually, just mentioning, the first, one of the first, and my daughter's in second grade at Peppin, and the way that her teacher is, is sending homework home, as she sends four vocabulary words a week, and the first one was compassion. And I just thought, like, what a great word, especially in, with everything that's going on, you know, for these students to really be good people.
Know what it means.
You know, and it's about the education and what they're learning, but it's also about them being, you know, good citizens and looking out for one another, so.
I agree. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lieutenant Follinsby, a number of these reports that we've had have made reference to the use of formative assessments as opposed to summative assessments. And rather than ask any one principal to speak to it, I, I think it would be valuable for people in the community to understand that distinction, and also, as a, perhaps, a related piece to talk about the difference between norm-based assessments and criterion. Most folks of my age or older grew up with a bell curve grading system. I know from my, my own children's experience in these Hampton schools that that's not the case, and there's good reason to move to criterion-based assessment. But I think that those are things that, as Marissa just said, run throughout all of these presentations, the one that we heard from Principal Belice before, and, and the ones that we've heard tonight. And so learning about what those are and how they're related to student mastery and success, I think would be neat for us to learn more without putting an additional burden on these folks to come. Perhaps we could see something about that as well. And if I could just make a note, I appreciate that we're going to teach math everywhere in the curriculum. I think it's great when the mathematics teachers talk about the history and the historical development of these things. If we just had an MCAS test around history, which, if we're going to have MCAS, we ought to have one, about history, that would be terrific, too. Sorry, little plug there for the, sorry little stepchild of the traditional curriculum.
Peter Gunn, history teacher.
No, I, I agree with what Peter's saying, absolutely. I did want to mention, too, that you saw their goals in two different formats. The one format is a PDF that's, that comes out of Teach Point, the online system that we use, and the other one, at the time that these went out to you, Kevin's wasn't in Teach Point yet. I usually have them do them first, you know, in Kevin's forum, so that we can look at them and kind of go over them, and then they put them into Teach Point afterwards. And so the next is the school committee meeting schedule for 2017. Oh, before that, actually. I did want to just take a minute, this is not on your agenda, but I think you're all aware that the results for PARK and MCAS were released yesterday. And so I'm very pleased to announce that with all the hard work that's gone on in our district, we now have four of our five schools in Level One, which is the highest level designation in the state for academic achievement of schools. So we're very, very excited about that. Our one school that's not yet in Level One, we are putting lots of resources and people in place to support that school to also become Level Ones. I think Shirley Guilfe, the curriculum director, that's what happens when you're out there rolling all those hours out of the pond, a few years ago, said that in our district, and particularly with the budgets that we've had in the past, we've had kind of a whack-a-mole system. So we've had to target our resources to the schools that needed them the most, and, and so now we're, we're moving on to our school that we want to bring up to Level One. And so I'm, I'm very confident that we will do that very soon. So I wanted to mention that.
I'm sorry, and I know Nancy, too, that in one of our presentations, which, that's why these are extremely helpful, they're talking about what works and what's carried on from elementary right into white book. So targeting things that work and then, you know, just continuing it. So I think that's, you know, just going win-win also.
Definitely. And so then the last item on my report is to ask the school committee to look at the meeting schedule for 2017 and determine if there are any changes that need to occur.
Any questions or comments on the meeting schedule? Need to vote on that?
I'm sure it won't change at all.
I don't know. Have we voted on it in the past?
Why don't we do that?
Why don't we just vote on it, just to be sure? Without my assistant here, Sue Colby, who guides us through all of it.
Motion to approve the school meeting schedule for 2017?
Second. There's a motion to approve the school meeting schedule, school committee meeting schedule for 2017, and it's been seconded. All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Just, I know that we're in an election season, this may seem premature, but I, I think it's always important, and I mean this with respect to no one on the committee other than myself, but next year, in 2017, there will be elections for the school committee. And I think it's never too soon for people to begin to think about this as an opportunity to serve the city of East Hampton and the students and the teachers who work hard on behalf of the students and their administrative support teams. The school committee is a, is a terrific way, if you've already been involved, perhaps with a parent-teacher organization, or your children are involved, or you just care in the community about the quality of life here and the quality of the educational experience of our children, this is one more way. And it does take some time and some planning, and that will roll around, you know, long after now, but since people are thinking about elections right now, I hope some folks are inspired and, and will seize the opportunity to, to seek a position on the school committee next year.
Thank you very much. Okay, warrants and payroll.
I move to approve the school payroll dated September 29th, 2016, in the amount of $467,715.68.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion to approve, and it's been seconded, school payroll dated September 29th, 2016, in the amount of $467,715.68. All those in favor? Motion passes.
I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated September 29th, 2016, in the amount of $161,709.58.
Second.
There's a motion that's been seconded to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated September 29th, 2016, in the amount of $161,709.58. All those in favor? Was that everyone? Motion passes. Thank you.
Motion to approve the minutes from the September 13th, 2016, meeting of the school committee?
Second.
There's a motion to approve, and it's been seconded, the minutes of our school committee meeting on September 13th, 2016. All those in favor? Motion passes.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you very much.